Okay, we'll go ahead and call this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. A roll call shows that we have five members present. Commissioner Barons is absent and we currently have a vacancy. Our Vice Chair, Eric Bishop, is attending, but he's attending via telephone due to the circumstances that we have around us currently. I would like to start by invocation by Commissioner John Adams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Rob Hefner. All those that would like to join, please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you this evening. We are grateful that we have the opportunity to meet together this night to discuss our community. We pray that Thy will be with us this night and we'll be able to make the decisions we need to do as we strive to help our community grow forward. We ask that Thy Spirit be with us as a community and as a country as we are going through challenges and sicknesses, that Thy would have comfort to those who are sick, Father. We ask for them to be protected and be safe, and we ask for the safety with all those in our community, and we say this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One God, under God. And the delivery of justice for all.
Okay, so before we get too far in, Vice Chair Bishop would normally be running this meeting. Again, he's unable to attend physically with us today. To help things be a little bit smoother, rather than have him try to run it through a telephone, he's asked me to go ahead and just run the meeting under his direction this evening. So that's why it's a little bit different tonight. There is no old business, so that would bring us to Item 6A, new business, which is consideration of conditional use permit 60204228 submitted by Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Inc. to allow for an ambulance station on property located at 621 East Old Linden Road, that being APN 210-17-024A. I'll go ahead and read the staff report as well as findings of fact and staff recommendations. Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Inc. has submitted a conditional use permit, or CUP, to allow an ambulance station located at 621 East Old Linden Road, that being APN The applicant has requested to locate an ambulance station on the subject property. The property is Zoned C2 or general commercial. An ambulance station requires a CUP in the C2 zone. Building on the property was previously used as a beauty salon. There is an existing gravel parking lot and natural landscaping at this location. Arrowhead plans to park the ambulance in the gravel parking area as indicated on the submitted site plan. Findings of fact are as follows. The current zoning of the surrounding properties on all sides is C2 or general commercial. The current land uses of the surrounding properties include to the north, Mountain Strong Physical Therapy; to the south, White Mountain Safe House, Thrift Store, and the Sonic Drive-In; to the east, Harris Automotive and an urgent care; and to the west, New Image Auto Body. Transmitting memos were sent to all affected agencies. Applicable comments received include from the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District. This will be a change of occupancy. Compliance with current codes and standards is required. I would add that the fire district considers this to be an R2 occupancy. Our building official in discussions with other building officials as well as an individual who helped write the building code has determined that this is an R3 occupancy. Difference between the two, R2 requires sprinklers, R3 does not. And so as the permitting agency, we've determined that this is an R3 rather than an R2. The building official indicated that we must pull a building permit to change the occupancy of the building. This must be done prior to occupying the building. Again, currently this building is classified as a business occupancy. They're changing it more to a residential type occupancy. There are some code requirements that do need to be met, primarily smoke alarms. We also are requesting that they add exit signs over all exit doors in case that they do need to exit during the middle of the night. The property was posted and letters were sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. No public comment has been received regarding this CUP. After reviewing the standards for review, the zoning ordinance, discussions with the applicant, and because the request is consistent with the City of Sholo general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit 60204228 submitted by Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority to allow for an ambulance station on property located at 621 East Old Linden Road, that being APN 210-17-024A, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all developments shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including building permit requirement. And number two, the applicant shall coordinate with the building official to ensure compliance with building code requirements within 30 days of the effective date of this CUP. With that, myself as well as the representative from the applicant are available for questions.
I have a question.
Commissioner Adams.
Will they be staying overnight in this location? Is that correct?
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Kugler, Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, 1,000 East Mills in Sholo. That would be the intention once meeting all the requirements, yes.
I also have a question.
Commissioner Josh Adams.
So that's a pretty busy intersection on Old Linden and the Deuce, including high school kids coming up and down that road. Do you have any safety precautions or any type of plan to, you know, basically keep that part of the intersection safe when you have to go through it?
Yeah, primarily, I would say probably 90% of the calls coming out of that station is going to be a right turn up to the Deuce. At that point, we would observe all other, you know, traffic laws. As I mentioned in previous planning and zoning meetings, probably 80% of our calls are normal. We respond normal load of traffic, non-licensed sirens. Those that deem lights and sirens will follow basically the EVOC, the Emergency Vehicle Operator Course Code that's prescribed for emergency vehicle drivers, and obviously take extra precaution because of the Sonic as well. It's a lot of traffic and a very short exit.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, there's no other additional discussion. We'll go ahead and open it for a motion.
I'll move to approve CUP 60204228 submitted by Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Inc. to allow for an ambulance station on property located at 621 East Old Linden Road, that being APN 210-17-024A, subject to staff recommendation.
All right, I have a motion, second, by Commissioner Josh Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Eric Bishop.
Okay, thank you. Records show that this passed unanimously, five to zero. This then brings us to our next item on the agenda, which would be call to the public. I'm kind of looking at the door to see if Ms. Spectacot is going to come in and let us know if we had anybody. We had it set up today because of the circumstances where if there were individuals that were interested in making a call to the public, rather than attend individually and personally, they could call in, and we then would call them back and allow them to have those comments. Katie?
Yes.
Okay. We'll give her a second just to give us the yes or no. I'm getting the nod that there was no call to the public, so we'll dispense with the boilerplate on that. That brings us to approval of minutes. This would be the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of March 10th, 2020. Is there any discussion or corrections that need to be made to those minutes? If none, entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Commissioner John Adams makes the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Josh Adams, we're bookending it here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Eric Bishop.
Eric, okay, thank you. See that that passes five to zero. We'll go ahead and we'll do summary of current events. Commissioner Josh Adams, we'll start with you.
Yeah, just really a reminder to stay safe, wash your hands, try to stay healthy. If at all possible, shop local and get it to go. Yeah, wash your hands.
Thank you to all of our hospital folks out there. I know, not just here locally, but everywhere. I know they're under a lot of strain right now, so thankful for them.
Thank you.
I did all that and would like to congratulate Brant Clark for being appointed to the city council. He's now on the city council, so I congratulate him and they do a great job.
Eric, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what our public health officials have outlined as guidelines for these current times. The virus does not spread. You spread the virus, so please adhere to social distancing guidelines and also consider supporting our local restaurants for pickup orders. I do congratulate our chair for his appointment to the council. I think they made a fantastic appointment, and I wish them well. And finally, I want to thank the city staff and the council for your patience with me tonight. I have a bit of a special situation that makes it unsafe for me to be there tonight, but if I could be, I would have been there. And thanks to Director Kraskis for running the meeting for me tonight.
Thank you, Eric. We appreciate that. Just a few things to add or to reiterate. First of all, we are going through some different time. You know, what we're going through right now, I don't think any of us in our lifetime have really understood or undergone this. I would like to echo what's been said previously. Please be cognizant of your environment, be cognizant of the people around you. If they appear to be sick, perhaps take a step back or remove yourself from the situation. We're trying to phase out, as difficult as it is, the handshake because that does tend to spread diseases and things like that. Also a reminder to help, you know, wash your hands or do things along those lines. To help with that, City Hall is now closed to the public unless you have an appointment. We are still accepting bill payments. You can make those outside in the drop box. If you do need to make an appointment to discuss billing or something like that, please call 532-4000. Also, we are currently accepting building permit applications, and we are still issuing building permits, but that is by appointment only. If you would like to make an appointment, please call 532-4040. I would also like to echo very strongly continued support of our local restaurants. By executive order, they are closed except for carryout or delivery or curbside delivery. I had the opportunity on Friday to visit a number of them personally and discuss that with them. We have a number of our local restaurants that are very concerned that this is going to affect them negatively and for a very long time. So I would encourage you, you know, again, continue to patronize them, continue to go and purchase meals and things like that from them. They'd be very appreciative of your business. Even if you just took one meal that you normally would not eat out and made that a special effort, I'm sure that they would appreciate that. And with that, that ends my report. If there is nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everybody.
Bye, Eric. Bye, Eric.